Where are all my people?
Hey, everybody, everybody. Welcome, welcome. Yes, it is Monday, May 9th, 2022. Welcome once again to Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. This is Kevin Mahoney, creator and founder of Raging Chicken. On Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards and across the country. You can join us at the end of the week for our Friday Politics Roundup, where we break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics. And you can also check out our once or twice monthly The Wednesday Show with Cyril Micalaico. Cyril, of course, is a progressive columnist from the Bucks County Courier Times, the Atalanta Genser, and now also editor in chief of the Bucks County Beacon. He joins me to drill down into Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and international politics. You can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcast on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. You can support this show by becoming a patron for as little as $5 a month. Head on over to patreon.com/RRZPress and choose your membership level. You can also help out the show right now by heading over to our YouTube channel, if you're not there already. Smash that subscribe button, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so you know every time that we go live. And you can subscribe to our podcast wherever you get our podcasts. And while you're subscribing to that podcast, listen to that episode and give it a five-star review. That helps other people find the show. You can also join our Discord server. Info on that is in tonight's show notes. And for more PA progressive talk, tune into The Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook, wherever you get your streams, you can find him there. And make sure you subscribe to his podcast wherever you get your podcasts. Head on over to thericksmithshow.com for the latest across all his platforms. And if you haven't already, don't sleep on it, especially after we're hearing the news about the draft opinion on the Supreme Court. Make sure that you are checking out the Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast. The amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast rock the house. And they know where the bodies are buried. Make sure to follow them on Twitter at @TheNightCaucus. That's @TheNightCaucus on Twitter. And subscribe to their podcast on Anchor, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. Attention gamers, The Game In, that's with two N's. The Game In is a Quakertown-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show, and they've got everything for retro N64s, the latest consoles, video games for all platforms, collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops, walls, and walls of Funko Pops, I kid you not. And kids get a discount if they get A's on the report card. How can you beat that? Check them out on their Facebook page and follow them on Twitter at @TheGameIn. That's with two N's, @TheGameIn. If you've got a question about a game, you look for something hard to get, shoot them a message or drop them an email at thegameinpa@gmail.com. A special shout out, as always, goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, "There Are No People in the Future." Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @SongADayMan. That's @SongADayMan on Twitter. And if you want to help us end the domination of right-wing money, tipping the scales in the extreme in our school boards and our communities, well, we've made that easy. At least, we're trying to. Simply drop a donation to the Raging Chicken Community Fund at ragingchicken levelingfield.net. Help support the community organizing and school board candidates that our communities and our children deserve. Well, we've got some great stuff coming up in the weeks ahead on Out to Coop Live, too. Next Monday, of course, is Primary Eve. The Pennsylvania primary is on May 17th. We're gonna have an open show, taking your comments, your questions, your thoughts on what we're gonna see in the primaries. I'll be working the polls all day on Tuesday, so we're just gonna keep that a nice, easy, open show. Your questions and comments for next Monday. But on Monday, May 23rd, I think it's gonna piggyback nicely out of our discussion tonight. I'll have Sarah Aniano on the show. Sarah is a researcher who recently graduated from Monmouth University with a master's degree in communication. Her work on social media and misinformation and the rhetoric of the far-right has garnered nationwide media attention. And she aims to use her expertise in the future to clean up the information ecosystem online. She's gonna be here on Out to Coop Live, Monday, May 23rd, at 7:00 PM. But you're not here for that tonight, Tonight Show. I welcome Jonathan Casa to the program. Jonathan is a director on the North Penn School Board. He is also a national expert in school and campus safety. North Penn has experienced the same kind of right-wing extremism flooding school board meetings across Bucks County. North Penn found its meetings disrupted by members of Moms for Liberty and Reopen Bucks. And in the last school board election, North Penn also saw the flood of right-wing money into the campaign. Jonathan Casa has been unwavering in calling out extremism, warning about the threat to our democracy, and insisting on defending our kids and our communities. Welcome to the show, Jonathan. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate this show, your listeners, and everything that you do to increase this platform so that we can share with each other and learn.
Well, 100%. You know, and I think, and like I said to you before the show, I've been, you've been one of the people that I've been wanting to talk to quite a bit all throughout this past year, as really the insanity across our school boards have just gone off the rails in so many different ways. And you have been someone, you know, running for school board, but then has been outspoken on social media and in your communities against this kind of misinformation, the flood of this kind of dark money or just big-dollar money coming from a few key folks. And so, you know, and it's, we're all experiencing the same things all across Bucks County. I've been talking about this on the show, as Bucks County seems to be very much, you know, a testing ground for particular kinds of approaches to politics. So, thank you for being here tonight, and I'm sorry it's taken me so long to have you here, because it's, man, we could all use it, for sure. But before, well, say, before we dive in specifically what's happening at North Penn, you talk a little bit about why you decided to kind of, you know, run for school board, get involved with the school board, and what you've begun to see happening in your community over the past kind of year or so.
Certainly. It's exciting for me to be here as well. I was, grew up, was raised in Bucks County, lived there after we got married, started my career in Lower Bucks, lived in Central Bucks, grew up in Upper Bucks. And still, we're that hanging Chad of PA 01. And so, here in Montgomery County, we're tied together at the Fitzpatrick. So, yeah, it's, one of the reasons I ran, it was really not about running. It was, I mean, all of us, doesn't matter where we're at on the political spectrum. You want to have some purpose, and one way to do that is to be connected with the community. And I still remember, you know, being a little kid going to Borough Hall in Quakertown, because we wanted to, we kept getting in trouble for playing street hockey on the streets. We asked them to get us a court. We got the court. By then, we'd graduated and moved on, but at least, right? It's a legacy there for somebody else. But I was raised, you know, by my parents and the family. You know, you speak for those who can't speak. You, you know, you make sure that you leverage the opportunities you have to make sure that others do as well. And by the time, you know, our kids, you know, my wife Kathy and I, going 25 years anniversary this summer, we were...
Congratulations.
Thank you. You know, our kids were in elementary school. We had some interactions with the school board at that time, and they weren't the most satisfactory. And before you know it, right, 2016, we all have that story. How many candidates have you spoken with who, you know, decided that, sure, being active, we thought that was enough, and it clearly wasn't. So, I was very fortunate to be surrounded with some other like-minded, very different backgrounds, but like-minded people who wanted to change the trajectory of North Penn and have a school board that was more responsive, inclusive, and for the first time ever, wasn't run by a single party for over five decades. And so, we ran as North Penn Neighbors for Progress. Even then, we felt like we were a bit of a black sheep out of step with Democratic Party politics. You know, we were gonna win it our way, or, you know, in spite of what others maybe told us. We weren't doing it by their playbook. So, we flipped the board in 2017, and that was the first time ever, historic. And we went out of the way to appoint a Republican as vice president of the board. We felt it was really important to reflect, you know, this is a purple community, common sense before politics, it was more that we agree upon than disagree. And, you know, next thing we know, there's a 9-0 North Penn Neighbors for Progress, Democratic majority at North Penn. But we take it very much to heart that you represent all of North Penn and all the ideas. So, you know, I could go on and fill, you know, a blue book there, Professor, with the answer. But ultimately, it was, you know, get involved, get something done, and not be there for decades, like some of the school board directors who've been there before, who we value their contribution and what that means. But, you know, our goal was, let's get in, roll up our sleeves, show some results for the community, and move forward. I'll leave it with, I think, you know, the crux of our problem we're dealing with in society and our community now is that I ran because I believe in communication, compromise, consensus, that's how we move forward, right? The values of democracy, that's where we're stuck right now as well. And we don't have to describe that. But I still feel that that's the way forward, and we need to double down and focus on those values.
Well, and I seem like, you know, in many ways, the story that I hear again and again for folks who started getting involved with their school boards, whether it's this election cycle or previous election cycles, I mean, this was true in Pen Ridge where I'm at, was that the assumption had been that, you know, the school board had, you know, the best interest of kids in the community and the parents kind of, you know, at stake. That's kind of where their minds were. And so, I think it's true in a lot of communities across the country, right? Not just here in Pennsylvania or Bucks County or something like this, that the more local the politics, the less people know about what's happening there, which is the most bizarre kind of inversion that we get. But it's, I think it's true in many ways. And so, people were just assuming that, you know, folks on the school boards were, you know, they're just kind of like, make sure the schools are functioning right. And that began kind of switching. But now, we've got this, on the one hand, we've got this kind of ideological, kind of right-wing ideological misinformation campaigns that we're seeing that are well-funded, that are showing up on our school boards, right? And there's some damage to that, which is, on the one hand, it's, yes, it splits things up as it's a partisan, this becomes just a partisan issue. But then it also forces it into a partisan issue, right? And what I found fascinating, what you did at North Penn, was basically you said, okay, look, we're not trying to just now switch it over and now go, like, now we're gonna claim for the partisans over here, but we're gonna try to reset this as like an institutionally functional, responsive board, right, that does essentially what the school board does. And I think that, in some ways, is the hardest move to make, especially when you have kind of a group of folks out there that all they care about is power, right? So, you've got to do this both and, right? Of how do we reset the board and do this work, like you said, pull up the sleeves, while at the same time responding to some of the most kind of extreme hate that I have seen in my lifetime, you know?
It's been, I think, one of the, you know, we're still writing this book. So, and hopefully, no one's gonna get to burn this one. Our goal is not just being responsive and communicating. I, you know, I admit it, I'm a poly-sci nerd. That's, you know, I have a master's in public administration, you know, from Villanova. As a history major at Penn State, I taught some of those courses at Villanova for the MPA program. And there's, there's, you know, I'm excited throughout all the stress and the strain of what it means to be, you know, the only volunteer unpaid elected official in Pennsylvania. That's your school board directors, right? No matter how big or small, 500 school districts statewide. And you've got to, you know, either have one reason, which is just for power and to drive an agenda, which is what we're accused of, right? That's, that's the ironic thing. Or you're getting into power to represent, and it's not power, you're there to represent those who elected you. And that's a very broad spectrum of people. So, it's, it's always, it's always very interesting when someone's on the other side of the microphone of public comment, yelling at us, screaming at us, or sometimes just calmly making veiled threats or saying how horrible we are. And that's their right. That's, that's the beauty of, of local government. But it always amazes me that, you know, what we're being accused of, you know, that one person at that one time behind a microphone, they're, they're my boss. They're our boss. And it just always amazes me, okay, well, what about the anarchist? Is that person my boss? The communist, the Nazi?
Right, right, right.
Whatever you, and, and that comes down to, you know, just the, the simple fact of, you know, let's, let's share a bit with each other, let's learn about the process, and then let's communicate. Many ways, people have just been weaponized because of very real fears that they have. But they've been weaponized to just react, and, and it's that emotion that's being exploited. And I miss the days when we could just talk to people in the parking lots or, or right after a board meeting, face-to-face, and work through our issues. And that, that is what the powers that be are manipulating and taking away. That's why local democracy is being damaged every day, that these partisan, you know, these partisan targets are placed on local elected officials.
Right, 100%. You know, and then back in, in February, Cyril Micalaico from the Bucks County Beacon had interviewed you to talk about what was, you know, your perspective on what's going on in North Penn. And this is one of the things that you said. So, "Missing disinformation," quote, "is being fine-tuned and weaponized to discredit and create distrust in local governments that partisan agitators can't change at the ballot box." And then here's the key point here. So, they lost in November, but they can create chaos in public comments and on social media and in other ways. And I like that nuanced point, because on the one hand, there's the contest about the election. But when there's the disruption and the, you know, taking aims at their, you know, confidence in the basically workings of the government, right? That seems to me to be, you know, the real long-term agenda, where we lose control over our democratic processes. And it's just power brokers at that point that are gonna come in and dictate which way it goes. And then, you know, and then at that point, we're talking about, you know, who's got the money and who's got the organization behind that, which seems to be the exact opposite of what we should be teaching in our schools.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the larger backdrop is, you know, and this is part of being a student of history, right? Big money doesn't think short-term, right? Wealth thinks beyond even just the lifespan of one single school board director or one activist who's standing at public comment. There's a longer game that's being played out. And, and that's where, you know, we have to, it's incumbent upon all of us as community members, no matter where we're at politically, to make the effort to connect. Because when we don't do that, there's absolutely, and I'm not someone who thinks that, right? There's a devil with a pitchfork behind every plan.
Right, sure.
You know, there are reasons why these, these movements come along and why activists, no matter what part of the spectrum they're on, have, have some real reasons to discuss issues. I think what we've seen is, right, yeah, the Tea Party take over the state houses in the mid-aughts. And now, we have school board races. Finally, it's trickled down. And we have that same zero-sum approach for these local races. And, you know, that big money, those agendas coming out of Washington DC or out of Harrisburg, you know, out of those state houses and those far-right political parties, they are absolutely dividing local communities, because they're saying, this is the issue. Stick to the script. There's nothing else to talk about. These are pedophiles, right? Pedophiles, communists, Nazis, you know, the whole lot.
Groomers, don't forget the groomers who are the pre-pedophiles, right?
And that's, unfortunately, that's the zero-sum game, which, you know, advances other people's agenda. I don't care what side of the political spectrum you're on. When you decide to stigmatize and use dogma left or right, you're not getting anywhere. That's not the American way.
100%. So, can you take us into a little bit about what the tenor has been like in North Penn? I mean, for people who may not be familiar, what has happened in some of the arc in some of those North Penn school, and school meetings? Because I know that we saw some of the big money that flooded all throughout Bucks County and across the state, right? We saw $10,000 being dropped in all these local school board elections. It was certainly true in Pen Ridge and Central Bucks and Palisades, North Penn, too, as well. We've seen that kind of investment. We've seen the funding of organizations like Moms for Liberty, right? We've seen the kind of reopen Bucks, that it kind of weaponized the kind of mask debate. So, how did that kind of present itself in those school board meetings, right? When, what kind of, you know, fever pitch did it get to? Is that still ongoing now, right? Or is that something that seems to have subsided? Or is it gearing back up as we're approaching the primaries? I know I asked about 17 questions there, but really just kind of get the sense of what's, you know, what that experience has been like in North Penn?
So, the experience, you know, we'll have to see where it goes, month to month. But during the, the election, during election season, you could see an ebb and a flow. And we could see what was happening at a school board in Tennessee, or Oregon, or pick a state. And you saw those talking points coming out, right? You just knew it. You know, you could, you could probably make a pool or a game of bingo as to what the issue was gonna be that would come up in those meetings. You put on top of that the culture war. What we really saw was emerging, or, you know, what began as just keep schools open, you know, you made, you know, criticism about whether school districts stayed open or closed, about whether masks should be on or not. You know, that was almost, you know, those are salad days in comparison. And those are some tough days of governance and moving the community forward. But over through the election, and you could see this back in May and June after the primary, you could see it being merged with the talking points from the mothership, right? Big media and social media on the right. And then, that's where they took the culture war and they morphed it. It's like one-stop shopping, right? Somewhere on that spectrum, if you were an angry parent, and what was happening, you could probably find something, you know, from those channels to pick up. And that's where, by the time it hit fever pitch, was August for us. You know, you'd go, one month would be okay, and we'd regain control, another, you know, they'd show, parents would show up with every right that they had to to discuss the issues. But where it would go off the rails is demonization and dehumanization of public servants, especially of our employees and staff. But when that began to happen, June, July, August, we finally had to shut down a, a meeting. Police were called in. It was ugly. It was our little slice on the smallest level, still apples and oranges. But you got to feel what people felt like, you know, on January 6th, you know, being ushered into the back, we had to go over, you know, extensive security details, which we still have, you know, to make sure that we're proactively managing threats. And the death threats have, they've been coming for well over a year, whether it's people posting that, you know, we should be hanging from, from light poles to, there's at least one or two investigations still that, you know, we can't even discuss. And that's ongoing. At the same time, you saw a lot of people drop off after the election. It stayed a little hot through January, but here at North Penn, the one thing we've wanted to do this entire time is not be distracted by the noise. Let the people talk. They have every right to. Let them question. It'd be nice if we could actually work together, like the books. Books was the biggest, to me, that, that just exposed the whole sham of it, right? There's always been a process in place. The policies are there. If it was pre-pandemic, parents would have brought it up at the school level. If that didn't work, chain of command, eventually, right? Principal, cabinet, then you bring it up to the school board. Instead, people were jumping right to rage. And that's really, you know, we're still seeing the burning embers of that right now. But in North Penn, we ended up beating the Republican slate, four tickets, right? If there's any year for us to lose a seat, it was gonna be November, possibly. We ended up beating by a combined 10 points, this community voted, to keep a 9-0 Democratic majority. They weren't voting for Democrats. They were voting for civility. And so, that's what we've done. We delivered on union contracts. We've delivered on great benefits for our staff. We've continued to expand our equity, you know, inclusion, diversity strategies. We are delivering for the community. We're delivering buildings and infrastructure. We have labor peace. And yes, there's a lot of noise along the way. That's, that's just, you know, part of the role right now.
Well, and I think that, you know, this is one of the reasons why I think North Penn kind of stood out in this last round of elections, too, as well, because you were able, you know, despite the noise, despite the money, you were able to kind of expand and maintain, and maintain that seat and that kind of approach to the school board, which is, you know, one of the goals, you know, we talked a little about this before the show. One of the goals on this show is, you know, to constantly, you know, keep, keep the spotlight on what's happening on the different school boards, but then bringing people on and then ideally connecting folks up, right? So that you have, expanding a network of people who have, just, just so that people have other folks to talk to, right, about how do you approach this? How do you kind of like, like deal with these things? Because I think especially for people who may not be, you know, they're, this would be the first time involved in political campaigns, for example, that they're, you know, not deeply involved in politics. They're just trying to do something good for the school board, or they're concerned about what's going on. And suddenly, they find themselves in the midst of the maelstrom, right? And then not knowing kind of what to do. And I think, you know, some of that is changing dramatically now, because, you know, I mean, my, as I say sometimes, you know, the burnt hand teaches best, right? You know, sometimes you figure it out, and you're like, holy crap, okay. Now I've got a better lay of land, what we're doing. Now, how do I find to reach out to other people for resources to figure out how we kind of do what they do, say, for example, at North Penn? And I'm also glad that you brought up, you know, both the connection with what happened to the Tea Party and seeing these things happening nationally. You know, Raging Chicken got started back in 2011, and it was very much response to what we saw, you know, in the Tea Party victories in the midterm elections in 2010. And then we saw Wisconsin, and then Ohio. And we're like, this is not Wisconsin. This is a plant. This is a blueprint. And we're seeing it show up, so we better start doing something. You know, I tell the story all the time, it's like, we were expecting our second kid at that time, so I knew it wasn't gonna be on-the-ground organizing at that point. I learned my lesson with our first kid, that there's just not a lot of time, right? So, so this is what we end up doing, is, you know, work that I had been doing before. And when you, you know, we just had this conversation a couple of weeks back with some folks who are, you know, in, in our local school board, and saying like, look, if we watch what's happening at the national level, it's gonna show up on our doorstep, literally, within a day. And it was exactly that. You mentioned what happened with the books. As you saw that there are a list of books, right, that are circulating nationwide. And there, it's not like there's a problem that emerges in the classroom. A kid comes home to the parent, and the parent is like, oh! That's a story they'd like to tell sometimes. But what it is, is like, check and see if your school board has these books. These are where there's problems. Here's your prepackaged talking points. Go to your school board and raise hell about this. And that's what we're seeing. The reason, I mean, I think there's a reason why we're seeing the same books at, across different school districts that are being challenged and pushed right now. And, you know, and again, it's gonna be interesting to see where this goes as we start to move forward towards the, you know, toward the midterm elections. And obviously, we've got the primaries that are coming up next week. But, you know, just one wonders what's gonna be that next, next round coming forward.
Yeah, and, and that's where, and, you know, to our friends in Bucks County and, and beyond, I want to make it very clear, you know, North Penn, before that board flipped, had only one Democrat on it. One. Absolutely not the position you would want to be in. And there were two Democrats, and the great Carolyn Murphy passed away while in office. And they replaced that seat with a Republican. And that's what got a lot of people to pay attention, that something different was going on at school board level. I share that story because it, it does take time to organize. But the efforts, you know, there were, you know, over a decade's worth of amazing candidates and races to try to just get, expand the seats on the board. But eventually, the community came around. You know, eventually, you know, we had a good team that was able to run a race in a way that hadn't been done before, and that was running as a slate. You know, in North Penn, you're elected at large. And I don't care which party you're in, but if you're the party trying to flip it, and you're just running a one-off and not as a slate, you know, it's very easy for them to pick you off in your messaging. And, and I think we see that still. But I'm very proud that, I don't know whether it was North Penn Neighbors for Progress or not, but a lot more slates began to, to run after our race, even on the Republican side as well. And that's the way of building the party, building a movement. It's not about politics. It's issues-based, right? People on the far-right that hate us, I'm never gonna change their mind. They have recess insults, and what can you do about it? But there are a lot of really good conservatives in this community, all kinds of people on the political spectrum. If you can just talk on the doorstep, be able to pick up the phone and call back when they email you, have discussions about the issues that matter in their community, then that, you're gonna build the network that eventually makes the progress for, for a different type of person to be in office that reflects the community's values. You know, there's things, we're not perfect. We never will be going forward as a school board. No school board is. Going through the pandemic, we did more things right than wrong. But I like to think that this community, without even knowing it, when they elected Democrats to take over the board in 2017, uh, in, in 2017, and then two years later made it nine, nothing. That was the community voting to protect itself, whether we knew it or not. And, 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 you know, we were able to represent everyone across the political spectrum in the last couple of years. And we'll continue to do that no matter what's thrown at us. And, and my last point, the one thing that's kept us really, um, is, uh, really clear moving forward, especially with Tina Stoll, our president, Christian Fusco, who's our vice president. We're part of that original team that helped flip. This whole way through, it's always been, we're going to cast the votes that matter. We're not making it based on political decisions. We're going to make the tough decisions because we're not here forever. And, um, you know, and if we lose, we made a good, we have a clear conscious that we, we did what we thought was right to move the community forward. And, you know, we'll go home and spend more time with our families.
Right? That's what a lot of people don't get at the end of the day, right? The other day is like, is like you're, you, what happens if you lose, right? At the end of that, you get more time to yourself, right?
I, I still haven't got my check from George Soros after all these races. I, I've been accused. I'm like, where is it? Yeah, you know, but, but you got billionaires. Yeah. And to that point, uh, you know, these two billionaires, they funded over 70% of the Republicans of their race running against us. They wouldn't have had a voice. They wouldn't have been able to spread disinformation if they didn't have the money from those big pockets. That money's not going away. Th- this was just a test case. So that's what we need to learn from.
Right. One of the things we've been covering, especially what's happened with, with, uh, the money that, you know, the trace of money with Paul Martino, the money that he's been sinking into these, uh, kind of into these races. And, you know, and he's pretty, he's been one person that, you know, this is what I'll, I'll give the guy credit on this score is like, he'll say out in the open what he's, what he's doing. Right? When he was interviewed by the, you know, the New York Times as part of the daily podcast, at the end of that, he said, now I, okay, I've built my little machine. Now I need to figure out what I'm going to do with it next, right? And he's already reaching out even beyond Pennsylvania to look for ways in which, where he could sink that money in it. You know, this is what we see like, uh, from my angle, right? I'm not, I'm not asking you to kind of come with me here, but this seems to me is like, this is about the, the building of it being a power broker, right? Seeing himself as a power broker and wanting to kind of take that forward. What kind of machine that we're going to, we're going to see coming out of that. And I think, you know, these are not, you know, and this is not people with money that are just pissed off and are being able to outspend everybody else. They're people with money and agenda and building a strategy. And this is my concern. I tell you, cause like, you know, I'm in the Penbridge School District, like I said. And some of the things that are happening here are off the wall. I mean, I, they just canceled their diversity programs, for example, that, that had been worked on in the community for, for years. They're kind of, and we've got like, you know, here's just some type, just, just from even Bucks County. The Bucks County, um, school district dropped its diversity program. Black families say the district isn't acknowledging them. From the Philadelphia Inquirer, we had a breaking news just happening today. This is, uh, in, uh, in, uh, Central Bucks, right? That, uh, let's see, Lenape Middle School in Doylestown Borough, teacher was suspended after trying to support an LGBTQ safety and rights in the school, right? Basically headed numbers. Listen, if you're concerned, if you're threatened, if like you need somebody to talk to, here's a place you can contact, and now they're put on an administrative leave. Right? You have now another one, a non-binary student denied choice of a health class in Central Bucks School, WHYY. These are just like in the past, like week and a half.
Yeah, we, we've gone from the red scare to the rainbow scare, right? Like people need to be able to see through this. It's ridiculous.
It, it's, it's pretty incredible. So, I mean, I think that, you know, like you said, the money is not going away. And it seems to me that, you know, what you've been doing at North Penn has, you've already spoken to this a little bit, which I was, I really appreciate. Just talking about how you approached this as a campaign and kind of moving forward. Because I think the whole idea about running for a slate, they've been doing this now in Penridge for the past two, two, school district. And it's, you know, it's wild to just, you know, be involved in two cycles and seeing the learning that takes place in between two elections. About just being about, you know, your, your basic brass tacks stuff, right? I mean, how do you make sure that you're reaching out to voters? What's canvassing like? How do you do canvassing training? You know, what kind of events work? I mean, these are like the brass tacks of democracy, right? And it seems like, you know, it's the kind of thing, right? You have to exercise these things or they atrophy. And it seems to me that we're in that process of kind of like exercising, relearning these muscles of democracy so that we can actually participate in our communities. But it seems to me, we've got our work cut out for us in this context.
Yes. And I, I think to that point, uh, about these, you know, about school districts where, uh, people feel it's never going to change or it's a really steep hill to climb. I did give that example that, right, uh, you know, Democrats in North Penn were a forever minority. And, and that eventually changed to, to reflect the community, but it's that hard work. It's very tough, right, to, to run and not attain your goal. And yet realize how much you actually were able to advance, uh, the community by creating conversations and making, uh, eventually someone's going to stand on some shoulders and, and win a seat. Eventually probably more Democrats than Republicans, but we can't reinvent ourselves every single year. That, that's part of the problems with Democrats and there are personal issues that people just can't run again. But, um, it's important with, with that name recognition to get out and do it again, do it again, if you can. To keep the, the branding of a slate. Once again, don't be just politics focused, be issues focused. And then hopefully you build something that works across the community over multiple years. And that way you're building your brand up, right? Isn't that what it's all about in this day and age? And too often the democratic cycle, cycle is ebb and flow. And we pin it to the Mount Olympus or wherever the PA Dems make all the decisions and decide who gets money and who doesn't in the bigger races. But I, I think why we've been able to at North Penn, uh, get a little bit ahead of the curve is we haven't run a traditional school board race. Uh, uh, it doesn't mean that we're great at everything we do, but we had to pivot very quickly when we saw what was coming this, uh, this cycle last, uh, November. And honestly, uh, we ran what was essentially a state house campaign. That, that, right, uh, for a PA house seat. That's the, the way we were looking at analytics, the way we were fundraising, messaging. It was a non-stop seven day a week, felt like 24 hours a day. But we had to stay on top of it. And I think Democrats have learned, uh, you're only going to help when you start to seed and build those long-term year after year networks. Because it's the one time that parents care. You know, the, the one time we were seeing people get out to the polls that would have never gone before because it was an existential threat to their child. I want masks on my kids in school. We're going to get out and vote for you. That, that was a wave of voters, uh, you know, in a, an off year like that, we typically wouldn't have seen before. There are lessons that can be learned, um, you know, for, for all the threats and obstacles that may exist. I think Democrats have, have to look in the mirror and deal with reality. That's what the Republican machine already does year over year. The money's always there. The messaging is simple, concise and, and forever lasting. The problem is it's dogma and it's partisan. And, and a lot of people recognize that in the community. That once again comes back to, you know, civility, consensus, compromise, common sense before politics. You know, most people in the community want to have that conversation. Do Democrats get that message out there? You know, do, does the stigma of the national party affect the way people vote down ballot? Yes. Um, let's, let's deal with that.
Right. Well, this is something, the one thing I want to, I want to, got to get your sense on where you see things kind of going, what's CC on the horizon. But before we get there, there's one thing you would, you've been kind of coming back to a couple of times. And you mentioned early on, you said, you know, you ran on kind of issues based in your community. And one of the things that I've heard from numerous folks we've had on the show who've actually, uh, were organizing in, on behalf of different candidates, uh, around the school boards or who were school board candidates themselves, is that, um, especially ones that were kind of relatively new to campaigning and kind of politics, is that they were responding, as you're saying, they're song to really existential threats in their community. I know in Penridge, like, I mean, both my kids got COVID despite the fact that they wear KN95 mask because masks were just kind of like, whatever. So maybe three, four people per classroom has actually got these masks on. But we as parents saw this stuff happening, right? We saw that this is, you know, man, we do not want our schools to go down this road. And there were people that were concerned about their property values and there are people that are concerned about the quality of their education. There are people that concerned about, is my kid going to get in college if they're being tutored? That, um, you know, that evolution is a lie and God created us and like, I mean, you know, I mean, what's going to happen on their AP exam, stuff like that, right? I mean, so lots of, lots of different reasons were coming forward. And they ran up against this kind of democratic kind of consultancy, right? Which is, you know, dropped in, was not, it's not organic, not built in Bucks County, but folks that kind of came in from outside, get dropped in and say, here's the messaging that you need to have, right? And these candidates hit up against that and say, wait, wait a minute. These people are coming in, talking about critical race theory, and they're, they're saying that our teachers are trying to groom our kid. We have to respond to this. And these folks at the consultant said, no, 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 that doesn't win elections. And by the time they came around to it, it was too late. So in that, you know, in that kind of context, I mean, but in North Penn, you said, no, look, we just focused on the issues, right? Now, one, did you run up against that, right? That kind of that pushback or another way of putting that is like, what would you say to folks, right? Say to folks that are kind of like questioning like what those issues are and how to grapple with, you know, these quote unquote professional voices that are telling you kind of, you know, how to properly communicate in your community.
So we, and, uh, what you're describing, um, uh, is, uh, I like to call like the electoral, uh, the, the democratic electoral complex. And, and, you know, there's some great consultants out there, but I, I don't, I think it doesn't trans, uh, it's not, I think, it doesn't translate to these local races. Or ultimately, you know, whether you're running for this, you know, dog catcher of the president, are you listening to people, understanding their needs and, um, addressing that, their, their emotional needs, right? Not someone just coming in and telling them what they need to know and saying what you're going to do, right? That, that's transactional. I think Democrats have done that for far too long and they have a reputation, right, for doing that. You know, remember John Kerry in the lockbox in the Saturday Night Live, right? So when we would actually talk, uh, before we'd go out and knock doors in our first race. So keep it simple, stay on message, you know, don't, don't be, you know, John Kerry.
Don't be John Kerry. It's a good.
To those, well, you know, don't, don't get wonky. Don't overthink this. What the, you don't know what people care about. They will tell you, you have to listen. And, and then you're going to understand what the issues are, then you can have a platform, right? Sounds simpler than, than it is, but to the critical race theory, uh, and any of these issues that were coming up. And, and we, we saw them coming. I, I remember making one phone call and the fellow was like riding his bike in DC, um, major Democratic donor and telling him, you gotta get ahead of this. Listen, kid, you know, are you doing anything with school boards? Cause this is actually, you could turn the crisis into an opportunity. Uh, I think we're funding a white paper on it. Uh, I, I hung up the phone.
Is that unbelievable?
Very frustrated. You know, we put up a, a, a critical race theory. We, we had a page on, on our campaign. And said, hey, you want to know where we stand? Here it is. You can still go there today and see it. You want to call us out about diversity, equity and collusion? We're going to push back every time and not let you misinform the community about what's happening. You know, we're going to talk about the fact that if we want our students to be the most successful in this world, they have to be able to understand and function in this world, just like the military teaches DEI or EDI, whichever, whichever way people might term it. Just like all the Fortune 500 companies right on down the line. We're not going to be the school district that decides, oh, we want to take that off the plate for our kids being successful in, in, in the real world when, when they leave North Penn. And that created some, you know, heated exchanges and some of the people in the community didn't like what we had to say. We had to listen to what they had to say. But you try to at least, um, create a better understanding as to why we do these things. And at the end of the day, you at least go down swinging with the truth, right? Like if you're going to dodge a win, you know, you're going to go tilting at windmills, um, you're at least going to hit, you're at least going to hit the truth. Uh, uh, if you're doing it for the right reasons. And, and I like to think that some of that resonated. People, you know, they need to see you as a, a genuine representative. Of course, some people would see me as a genuine something else, but it's a family program, so.
Yeah. Well, there's, you know, there's, uh, there's people in the comment section right now who are having a fun with that part, so. Always a joy. Yep. But I mean, your point there, I mean, like, I, I hear some of the stuff that comes out of the, uh, that comes out of the mouths of these consultants and what they're telling the candidates. I'm like, people can smell that, excuse me, that bullshit like a mile away. When you're giving them a prepackaged talking point, you're not talking from yourself and from your kind of position. Like it's going to come across as fake because it is.
And you're running away from it, right? I mean, if, whether it's CRT, whatever the issue might be, right? Any issue as benign as it might be, if, if you've got to think that hard about it and not address it head on. Who the hell are you to be representing your community? Like that's what it's about. And, and move aside if not, and you know, perhaps, uh, you know, those are the stoves that some democratic, is some, some, uh, Democrats still need to touch. Now, I, I will say on, on the flip side, one of the things that helped is Montgomery County Democratic Committee. You know, made sure that they convened a group, uh, which I was a part of to discuss critical race theory and what was coming down the pike. That was over the summer and they did use that information to, to just help and be able to assist those candidates who were, they were meeting this on the doorstep every time they spoke to someone. And if you weren't able to engage, you're not trying to convince or persuade someone, but you have to understand where they're coming from to have the conversation. And hopefully from there you can get a better understanding. Or at the least you have a respectful, you know, uh, some respectful communication and, and you move on, you know, whether you get their vote or not.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it, it's funny, you know, I always say, this is kind of like, uh, this is something I'll, I'll teach in my classes, right? When you're kind of like making an argument, right? You're getting into a place where a points of kind of conflict, right? You can actually say, right, to other people, you could say like, okay, this is, this is why I think this, right? And because I think this and there's a reason for it, so I'm connected with it because it matters to me, right? That doesn't mean that I have to erase yours or there's a winner here. It's a point of like, I want you to at least understand where I'm coming from and why I believe these things. And if I talk as a real living, breathing human being, I'm going to be like much more successful and actually communicating with people. Doesn't mean necessarily everyone's going to agree with me, right? But at least they're walking away from that conversation, saying, I just had a conversation with another living, breathing human being and not some, you know, kind of piece of paper that came from God knows where.
Yeah, no, those are the best conversations. Uh, I love knocking doors or talking to people who we are completely opposite perhaps on political spectrum and will laugh, well, great conversation. Sometimes they'll vote for me, sometimes they won't. And sadly where we're at in our community and what I think the big money and the long game is doing is, um, they're injecting this dogma and we're like, dogma is the most un-American thing. I don't care what side of the spectrum you're at as an activist. And that means that people don't think anymore. They just act and do what they're told. And, and that's what we're seeing with, with, with that partisan battle. And, and, you know, I'll, you know, Hamilton and Madison Federalist Papers, number 10, uh, right? Faction versus faction. It's one of the greatest documents, uh, uh, by some of our founding fathers. It, they saw all this. They knew it was coming. They outline it even then. And you're supposed to balance each other and you're going to have factions, right? But somewhere along the way, people have lost any knowledge or sense of what the founding fathers were saying and why we needed to, to take caution so that we didn't end up in the environment that, that we have today, unfortunately. You know, at the most local level of politics, but, but, you know, it's not over. There's a lot of good stories. And, and ultimately, you know, the silver lining to all of this is that we have a lot more people involved, uh, in, in the process than we ever did before. So, um, you know, we need to embrace them, have the conversation to the haters that are out there. There's nothing we can do, but there are a lot more people I think that want to have conversations from different sides and, and, you know, be more pragmatic in our approach than dogmatic.
100%. So, so let me get, um, I've already kept you longer than I wanted to, than I promised you. But, um, so let me, let me just get, we'll kind of close all a bit. So if you're kind of looking forward down the road, right? You know, whether you want to talk, you know, you know, six months where we're talking about leading up to these kind of midterm elections or even kind of a little bit longer horizon than that, right? Are there things on the kind of horizon or in the kind of in the road ahead of us that you kind of see that you're kind of, get a sense of where things are going right now or what people need to be paying attention to? What they need to be doing in their communities, um, in order to kind of sustain the kind of work, say, for example, you're doing at North Penn. But actually to push back against this kind of, you know, like you said, this moneyed machine that's not going anywhere.
Once you get involved, you have to stay involved. It's very tough for a lot of us, right? Uh, life can be pretty exhausting, uh, from many different angles and everyone has their own, uh, obstacles and burdens to deal with. But most likely if you're watching this, you care. Uh, it doesn't matter which part of the political spectrum you're on. So, um, what are you doing to be involved? And it doesn't mean that seven days a week, 24/7. But the one thing that I think Democrats in particular haven't figured out is get rid of this ebb and flow. It's, it's an off year. It's, it's an election year or not. Stop listening to the consultants, listen to your community members. And that's going to give you the best platform to move forward. And I still have a lot of faith that that's going to happen in, in, you know, all the communities that we're talking about across Bucks and Montgomery counties. It's tougher in some, but you know, you have no other choice. You, you can't, you know, let the bastards grind you down, so to speak. You, you just got to, got to keep on organizing, speaking to others. In some ways I, I used to call it my electoral therapy when I. In some ways, I, I used to call it my electoral therapy when I first ran, right? You're getting out there and you're talking to people, you're dealing with the issues. You're not just sitting there doom scrolling uh, on social media. And so it, you know, get out, do some work. I don't care what political party you're in, you know, meet some people. Uh, uh, gain some friends uh, from the other side and, you know, let's have some fun. That's what community is about.
That's what you have it, right? It's like, there's a world beyond trolling on social media, right?
Yeah, yeah. Some, some might say, right?
Well, hey, listen, uh, Jonathan, I appreciate your time tonight so much and uh, you know, uh, and I like, thank you for kind of spending the time, kind of laying some of the stuff out. And I do think that there's a lot people could learn from what you've been doing at kind of North Penn. As you know, I mean, again, not to say that, okay, North Penn is the only place known. People are doing great work all across this county and all across the state. And the more that we can learn from each other, kind of swap ideas, swap stories, how did you handle this? What do you do for X, Y, and Z? Where we're dependent, exactly as you said, we're depending on each other. We're depending on folks in our community, right? Um, not to kind of diss every consultant that's out there, not to say that none of that's important, but just to say, right? Look, we got to trust ourselves and build our network here. Um, and then, because you look, if there's, we know our community is better than anybody else. So that's where we got to build and that's, that's where we got to be for the long haul. So, hey, I appreciate you taking the time tonight and uh, kind of best of luck going forward and kind of uh, we'll certainly be following you on social media. But we're gonna, I, I guess the trolls will uh, be coming along too as well. But uh, thanks so much, Jonathan, for taking time tonight.
Thank you. Be well, everyone.
Hey, you got it. All right, everybody. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. Thank you so much for tuning in tonight. We'll be back next Monday for our pre-primary show. And then we'll be back in two weeks. Once again, deal with some of the more misinformation. Until then, see ya.